This conference will now be recorded.
Are you ready? Okay, good morning, everybody. Call to order. Meeting, the planning commission meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Can you call the? Roll call, please.
Chair Marsh.
Here.
Vice Chair Carey.
Here.
Member Henigan.
Here.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Let the record show that member Kessiskin is absent with notice.
Can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the public, always standing, on a nation, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a little revision to our procedures here this morning. So Carla. Shall I go to public comment first? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak this morning?
Just for the record, remember, I'll remember, Flanagan has joined the meeting. And Chair Marsh, I did receive a public comment via email from Edward Schwartzberg, twenty-sixth Alouf Drive. For the past two and a half to three years of the eleven homes on Alouf Drive, four have undergone considerably construction and exterior renovation, including one demolition of an existing house and a building of a new, larger home. Two of those houses were on each side of mine. And one was across the street. Obviously, the noise, air pollution, and damage to my home is not ancient history. But hopefully, a lot of what I experienced may serve to help alleviate future problems to adjoining neighbors. Now, two additional homes on Alouf Drive will be considered for demo and new construction by Flanagan zoning. I have tried to prioritize the most important construction issues that are not currently included in the new handbook that may reduce the impact of construction to neighboring homes along our street. A demolition: Construction fences must be erected at least eight to ten foot in height to help protect adjoining properties from debris and dust, especially toxic silica dust from jackhammering, sandblasting, saw cutting, concrete, and stone. Two, heavy excavating equipment with an attached claw using destruction and removal of existing concrete slabs and swimming pool must be avoided in favor of smaller, less heavy equipment. Heavy earth-moving equipment utilizing a pound claw to break up the concrete slab will literally shake the ground and may result in some hitting structural damage to existing neighboring home with CMEU construction. Our concrete block homes may be hereditary system, but because of their rigidity and susceptible to any earth trembling or movement. This swaying occurred in my own home during the demolition of the adjacent property and continued for days. Until you learn what was happening, the earth movement was similar to what I had experienced during earthquakes. Homeowner's insurance does not cover damage from earth movement. Three, some of the older homes being demolished may contain asbestos or lead, and debris must be consistently and constantly sprayed with the water to reduce airborne particles from spreading to neighboring homes during demo and when loading debris into dumpsters or dump truck. Four, a specific timeframe for demo should be established and adhered to. By limiting excessive time, noise, and air pollution may be reduced, but that should not be the expense of maximizing the production of excessive toxic silica dust from concrete and stone and the debris from lead and/or asbestos. Also, subcontractors must avoid any earth movement created by using heavy excavating equipment with claws. B, construction. One, if the topo is being elevated on a neighboring lot, there must be a proof plan that is constantly elevated to avoid erosion and potential erosion onto neighboring properties. This may be a new code and regulations, but it does not seem to be enforced or is disregarded by contractors and their subs. Two, toxic air pollution. Many of the contractors and their subs did not require their team to wear proper respirators during jackhammering, sandblasting, and concrete and stone cutting, which releases significant airborne microscopic silica dust. That speaks volumes about their attitude towards resultant plumes and clouds of silica dust that became, they become airborne in coats neighboring homes, cars, pools, and especially our lawn. You don't have to be a physician to realize that silica dust is highly toxic to everyone, but especially to anyone with any forms of pulmonary disease. With the abundance of silica dust along Alouf Drive, prohibited any outdoor activities, including using our pool, outdoor grill, or even going outside. Even for a short period of time, most days when concrete sawing patio, stone cutting, sandblasting of stoko, et cetera, was taking place on one or two or even three of the homes at the same time. Little attempt to spray down the area or vacuum the existing dust was done in consistent and meaningful ways as required by OSHA. It's a real health hazard, and every only use that amount of airborne dust must be addressed by the building inspector, the contractor, and his team, et cetera. Three, noise. I suspect not much can be done about noise, but certainly exterior construction hours can be reduced. And starting noise can be eliminated to provide two-day of quiet enjoyment of our property. In all of the above, and along with other nuisance issues like parking, et cetera, it's really up to something to actively and constitutionally enforce the closing regulation. That also means acting as an advocate of neighboring property owners and not just the town itself. Also means avoiding an us-against-them attitude responding and resolving complaints in a reasonable length of time.
Thank you. What's the address?
Twenty-sixth Alouf Drive.
I don't see Durani.
He is not, he should be here, but I don't know if he's maybe on his way. I'm just showing him a little late. I did already refer him to the homeowner, so he is speaking with the homeowner directly.
Yeah, I guess the questions, I mean, they're all legitimate complaints, but surely we have, you know, means by, you know, through the building department to review and make sure that, you know, people are adhering to the normal standards of construction, so. I'll wait till he gets here if I can and then maybe ask him. Okay, any other public comment? All right, let's move on. Can we have a motion to approve, I believe, so February?
I would do except in the way that would, Rick may have some issues, but.
I don't this time, yeah.
Okay, I move.
Good. Off limits to Carla. Second.
Hold your favor.
I'm.
Okay. Carla, you're gonna have to help us through here now. What do we do to be correct here?
I'm opening for pocket the dash judicial hearing of the nineteenth Alouf Drive.
Okay. Is there any expertise?
No.
No. Okay. So the first item on the agenda is the proposed new construction for nineteenth Alouf Drive. I think I've been told to ask if Seth, I'm gonna make comments.
Before that, will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm for the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you have this warning, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Okay, if Seth had any comments, they should.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners, Coria Gorman, Town Planner. I've been sworn in. This project is construction of a new two-story, single-family home with three bedrooms and three and a half baths, including a study and a swimming pool. The project meets with the zoning regulations, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the closures to the staff report, including providing a dimension to the chimney, providing a flat roof calculation, setback for the pool, fence detailing as appropriate, noting that the home is limited to four bedrooms based on the study qualifying as bedroom for parking purposes, and revising the generator to comply with town code. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any comments from engineering?
No comments from engineering besides what's on the patch and the patch.
And building isn't here yet, so. Okay. The applicant. Give us a presentation.
For the record, my name is Gary Billy Office. I'm with GE Architecture. Our address is ten forty-five Houston, Atlanta, Gavin. I'm here to represent Mr. and Mrs. Mullins. If there are any questions, Mr. Mike Mullins is here for that. Here in the public comment, we actually did try to look at this home and renovate it first. There was several things that we ran into. Some was just the actual existing foundation was showing cracks throughout the slabs. I have a feeling that the soil had dropped a lot. Then, by the time we looked at the extent of it, the costs were rising. And then the fact was, the house was below the required elevation. This was back when we were doing a couple of years ago. Now it's all changed, and you're hearing about even the public comments that you have to go higher. So I think the pending code right now for finger regulations is at nine feet. The building code requires it a foot higher, and that's what we are proposing for this home. We can go to the next slide. So there's the existing site plan. One of the things about the house with is it is a single-story house. It actually does encroach the side setbacks as of right now, so it was nonperforming. It's three feet into the east and west side setbacks, as I stated what the height was. This is the proposed site plan. We do highlight the dock and sea wall as being under separate permit. It's actually completed. I don't know if it's closed out yet, but it's getting there. One of the things staff did talk about and pointed out was the pool setback off the rear. We do have the infinity edge that we're gonna shift it another six and a half inches so that we will comply with the minimum requirements there. We think, oh, can we just go back one? I'm sorry. We think that, you know, our proposed design actually is very respectful to the neighbors. You're gonna see our side of the building as it goes up or way inside, so we're not actually approaching any kind of visibility with our surrounding neighbors. If we go to the next one, this is just our pervious and impervious counts that we did. And we're basically at forty, forty-eight percent as far as pervious goes. Our next slide. So this is, this is basically showing you what's in the neighborhood. I'd like to describe the existing architecture around me, but I don't know. They're kind of a mixture of stuff. Basically, what we've done is at the top is our proposed elevation. We highlighted and read what the existing home is. On the east side of us, it is a single-story home. The ridgeline is at twenty-two feet. When you start looking at the fifteen-foot setbacks, then you see that we're fifteen off the property, but when you go to the second story, you're actually looking at basically fifty-three feet that we are from that up. So that's included. There's setback and our setback, but that's how far in our second floor goes. When you look at the height of our building, our proposed height is below. We're at thirty feet that we're proposing. When you look at on the west side, now that is a two-story structure, and we're actually approximately four feet, five feet below them. So we are keeping our heights within the code. As far as the house across the street is, is also a two-story house. Again, we think we're being very respectful with this design, and it's in keeping with the coastal theme that I think Ocean Ridge is shooting for. Next slide. Basically, is our floor, playground floor. Again, we're raising the floor up, so this floor will be at ten feet. We will be dealing with our side retaining walls in order for this earth to slope up. We're trying to do a gradual slope up to our garage. The garage is actually at seven feet finished floor. We step up within the building, and then in the back, we're gonna have it flat, and then we'll step back down to the sea wall. As far as our habitable area, you're looking at twenty-three hundred seventy-six square feet of AC. It's thirty-five hundred under roof of the ground floor. Of the pool location, there was a comment, also the proximity of the pool to the structure. We are just over five feet. Five feet is the code. We're actually five. Next. Again, this is our second floor, so you can see it's really very respectful with regards to how close it comes in on the sides. You're looking at a total of eight hundred ninety-seven square feet on the second floor, so it's nothing that's too exaggerated to the point that we're overbuilding. Total under roof up there is eleven hundred sixty-one. Again, very respectful. We've got a porch in the front, more for curb appeal, and then we have a covered porch along the back side. Staff did also mention about the slope of the roofs when you're below the four and twelve. So at our front covered balcony porch, we actually follow our pitch brick, so we are at three and twelve. That actually came out to two percent. I think code allows up to fifteen percent, so I think we're good there. There you go, as far as our existing elevations. It's kind of, I don't know what it is, potentially, but we just felt it probably has to come down. We did try, like I said, to do renovation. There just, there was a lot of funky conditions that we were dealing with, and again, a lot of it goes over the setbacks. So there's our proposed elevations. One of the comments from staff was the chimney height. From the top of the ridge, you will see that we are at T-ten. Code says you could be four feet, so we are well below that. Again, we feel the style is Anglo-Caribbean and in keeping with Ocean Ridge's theme. Again, these are the other two elevations as far as the south and east. And then we go to some colored elevations for you. Basically, what we do have is we have a stucco lap siding on the second floor to define the second floor from the bottom. The bottom is all smooth stucco. One of the things that I think staff did point out, along the front facing the street, we will have decorative aluminum fences that will be black to match the shutters. And then along the sides, we will have a chain link fence within the hedges with a black vinyl coating. And that concludes my presentation. Should you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Comments from any of the commissioners? Sorry, yes, Neil?
You want me to start?
Please.
Thank you for addressing the FEMA height. Could you give us a little bit more of a description? When I look at the streetscape, we're seeing the ridge heights, but we're not seeing the floor height in that. So how does, how does the ten-foot floor height compare to the floor height of the houses on both sides? How, give me a little more of a description of the ten-foot to the front of the lot, to the road line, and how you're gonna deal with the water? What are the heights of the retaining walls going to be?
Okay, so what I wanna do for you, I've just checked in to see, and I wanted to see if our survey, towards your question, the issue would be, what are the heights of the houses on either side? So the one-story house is actually gonna be approximately four feet below our finished floor. Their finished floor, right now, what I see is at five fifty-four.
Okay.
And like I said, we have to be at ten. So what happens is the retaining walls we're gonna have on the side, we're playing on the retaining wall on our side to be approximately six inches above the grade, okay? There will be a step down towards their grade. Their grade over there is at four feet. Picture this, ours is gonna slope from Alouf Drive up towards the garage, and then our goal is to slowly slope and then level it all up. So I haven't actually done the elevations on the side for these retaining goals. That's gonna be based on our civil engineer and our structural engineer, but our goal is to keep them low as possible, to retain the earth, and of course, retain the drainage that we have to by code. And then we're gonna have a fence above that with a hedge. As far as on the west side, that home is at an elevation of seven twenty-eight. So we are looking at about three feet there and some inches, if you will.
Not as bad.
Not as bad. But again, picture this, when I said I was fifty feet from the second floor to our neighbor on one stories, that's not so bad either, but you are right. With your ridge at twenty-two four, we're gonna be at thirty. You could say to that, the difference would be about another four feet on top. So just to give you an idea, so whether it's a fourteen-foot difference, but there is a difference there, but unfortunately, because of FEMA, it kind of stuck.
Yeah. I can visualize what's the wedding cake being, and so. What I was concerned with was what the actual ground level was going to look like, that we weren't going to have this big. I don't even know how to, amount of.
Right, amount, and I agree. So you don't wanna see this thing way up here off the street. Unfortunately, the street's at almost three feet, and so I've got to make that transition. We're doing it with our landscape, and that's what we're gonna try and offset our landscape, and so we kind of have it gradually going up. The last thing I wanted for our clients, too, was that steep driveway sloping up to their garage. So that's why we took our garage and actually dropped it down so that it's easier to get up into the house, and the streetscape helps.
What do you think, Mark?
No, that's a good solution to the issues. I mean, as we all know, we're gonna face more and more of these situations as we go along. Could I just back up a little bit, Gary? Can you go over the landscaping? Thanks for not bringing Dan here this morning.
I was going to.
It's too early for him. So please, if you could, for the rest of the commission, just take us through the landscape.
Okay, so basically, and it kind of, we tried to do it also with our rendering. We tried to reflect what we are gonna be proposing out here. You'll see that our landscape architect has tried to anchor the site. When I say anchored, I kind of look at the east side and the west side of the front with some large trees. Then, as you come up, he's got some decorative palms that will accent our front entry. One of the things that Dan was trying to do was basically look at trying to retain some, but there wasn't a whole lot to retain on the site. We're trying to work with hedges and stuff like that, but his goal was to just spruce up the front of this house. We will be looking at, and he was planting things kind of in the center of what we call in the north-south direction in order to minimize the second story from the neighbors, which that's what you start to see on both sides of that. As you see around the rear, he's actually got some trees that will be higher up so that the tenants can actually enjoy the view, but yet there is some screening again of the second floor. Beyond that, I will just agree to anything you guys say, because I'm not a landscape eye.
Try it. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanna make sure we discuss landscape.
No, I think, I mean, that's part of the solution.
Right.
Absolutely. He's got two green buttonwoods in the front, I guess, which are gonna be fairly substantial, hopefully.
Right.
Any comments?
I have an engineering question, but not for that.
Okay. Any other comments on the architecture? Of the commission? I will just say, I think it's a good submission. I think you've done a good job. I think, you know, the fact that you've stepped it in from the side is helpful to scale. And I think it's a very appropriate style for what for the people. I'm gonna go to, just, I have a question for the. Is Tara?
Yes.
Can you step up so we, everybody hear each other? On your report, you indicated that there will not require right-of-way swell because the street is a curb and gutter.
Yes.
It, there is no curb on this property, and there's only curb in front of a portion of one house and number twenty and the entirety of number twenty-six. And east of this house, there's no gutter. From this house to the west, there's gutter on the street. So does it, the absence of a curb change the swell? Or are you going to ask for the applicant to put a curb in?
So I'm looking on the engineering plan, and it shows the two-foot concrete valley gutter on both sides.
It's a gutter, not a curb. But it says, your report says, on streets with curb and gutter. So I'm trying to understand that. And I believe elsewhere, we, we ask for swales where there, where there is a gutter. I'm not certain of that. What, I'm trying to understand what our, what our policy has been on this.
Okay, so it's mostly on inlet cave, and then like hoping that we put some of this valley gutter because the road is so low.
Right.
That having that swell, basically, doesn't, it doesn't help like the drainage of the.
Would a curb, would a curb here help? Because this is where the, the location of, of the catch basins are in front of this house. This, this one and across the street is where the, the primary catch basin for that middle part of Alouf Drive.
Right.
So, you know, I'm almost thinking that in your solution of starting to go from the street elevating up, maybe part of the elevating up is to start with the curb.
A curb in front of the.
In front of this, this house, yes. To catch the water from going up. I mean, these, these valley gutters, you know, they direct water, they don't retain water. They don't, they'll hold it back from going into the yards.
Yeah, to direct the water to the end.
Right.
Could I get a clarification, because it sounds pretty good. Are you envisioning that the curb acts as a retention wall?
That basically, a little bit kind of stops, stops the water as its excess goes into the, into the catch basin. Allows the catch basin to catch up. Of course, so, so so much of our drainage on inlet cave has problems when it's tidal.
Right.
If the tides are up, there's no place for the water to go. So I, I, my first question was, is, was, are we only requiring swales where there's no valley gutter? And it sounds like.
Yeah, so when there's no valley gutter, there's inlets that are in the swell.
Right, in the swell.
So then we're talking about changing the whole system.
Right.
If you're gonna
No.
add, add a right-of-way swell, and then you have to add the inlet. And catch the.
And I'm not trying to re-engineer this. I was mostly starting out with your comment about curb and gutter, and there's, since there's no curb, I wanted to get clarification. It might have been just.
Yeah, it's just the way that we call it.
It's the way they say curb and gutter.
Technical, yeah.
It's.
That's just the way we call it.
A common reference to. Okay. I know, it's good. You're, it's a good point. I mean. The professionals versus the layman. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can reword that.
Okay. So you're happy with the, the current plan that's been proposed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I did have something I didn't say before. We are, there is a five-foot drainagement on that east side, which is gonna affect the walls. That's, it's twenty, yeah, but there is a, there's a reported, dedicated. So that's gonna affect the landscape. It's gonna affect. Does there, do you have any of that in that?
So the, so the applicant will be required to address that with their building plans?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Did you call a public comment?
No, sorry. But any public comment? During that?
I'll make a motion that based on incompetent substantial evidence testimony presented, I move to approve the development of the planned project located at nineteen Alouf Drive with the conditions that were set forth in the staff report.
with the conditions that were set forth in the staff report.
Britt, you're, you're also voting.
I am, I'm sorry. I, I, yes.
No, I'm sorry, we need a second.
I'll second it. I'd like the order of the client in front, but yeah, that's.
Hold this paper. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, moving on to ninety-nine Alouther Drive. Has it been any, was I? Or? Six part time?
No.
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 Is that a no?
No.
Okay, um, that.
Before anybody, um, that, for anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear in front of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I did.
When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you have been sworn in. And please speak directly into the microphone. Good morning. Sorry, we need to start with the staff report, please?
Yeah, sorry, we. Mr. Chairman, Deputy Commissioners Corey O'Gorman, Town Planner, have been sworn in. This project includes demolition of existing homes, site improvements, and construction of a new single-planly home, one-story with four bedrooms and four bathrooms, a, a new pool and spa. Uh, the project complies with uh, the zoning requirements uh, for this project subject to uh, conditions that are included in the backup in your agenda, including revising the tie beam, uh, the covered entry to be at or below twelve feet. Providing dimensions on each parking space in the garage and exterior parking to ensure compliance with town code. And providing dimensions between all mechanical equipment and property line to ensure compliance with town code. Uh, as well as labeling structures between the set tank and the main structure to determine if setbacks apply. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Engineering?
Um, yeah, um, we are requesting a five-foot drainagement along the west property line. Um, there is a drainage pipe on the east side of the property line, but to do any repairs or maintenance, we need the ten feet.
Thank you. And we're still missing, um.
Yeah, he's not going to be here, Mark.
Okay. Who could answer any building questions that may come up?
Depending on what it is.
Okay. Okay, just give us, thanks. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Adriana Finbold. I'm from Finbold Architecture. The office is twelve oh four Northeast Fourth Avenue, Boca Raton, Florida. And I'm very happy to be here this morning. Um, I'm working with uh, Mr. Ray Son and his sister Jan Bush. They, um, they actually, um, their dad built this house in nineteen sixty. We went through, the, the first project was to renovate the existing home. But um, once we got to this stage, um, we were uh, basically realized that we were not going to be able to meet that construction cost fifty percent rule for FEMA. So we went back to the boards and um, you know, we, since we had to raise the floor up to ten, we were currently at six. Um, the road itself, the kind of road is at four. So we're basically, um, we would like to build a one-story house similar to what they already have there in terms of um, the uh, design of the home, opening up the, the floor plan itself. It's a four-bedroom house, uh, four bathrooms. Uh, it has a central area, great room, the kitchen and dining area. Big sliding glass doors in the back looking down, uh, to the water. To the canal and the pool. We are trying as well to be very respectful to the neighbors. Um, on the uh, east side, we have a one-story house. It's an original house, I believe. And on the west side, there is a newer home that's um, much higher in terms of grade. The house is, the style of the house is trying to keep up with the, the, you know, what's required in the neighborhood. Um, there is a big mix of homes on that road, so it's kind of hard to say what, what style is over there now. But we're trying to design a uh, sort of like a West Indies Caribbean home. Um, we have the, the shutters, the decorative shutters, um, the glass, the um, the, the roof is uh, four to twelve. Um, we're keeping with all the heights. The tower itself was going to be a little bit higher at, at a thirteen. So we, one of the comments that came back is to raise it down to twelve. So um, in terms of staying with the neighbors, I think we're respecting that pretty well. You can go to the next line. So we have some of the uh, you know, decorative shutters and the uh, glass, the there are at least some woodwork that, you know, goes with the West Indies designs. This is the landscape plans. Um, the seawall itself is actually done a couple of years ago, uh, before we were starting the renovation. So we will have to actually bring that up a little bit once we raise the whole house up so that it works with the new retaining walls and to contain the drainage. That's our plan that shows your imperious versus pervious, where it's fifty, fifty-three percent imperious. Our, um, just our square footage, in terms of square footage, is we were proposing a thirty-one hundred square foot house under air. And your total square foot is forty-three hundred. We have our, you know, fifteen-foot setbacks. Um, which actually work pretty well with equipment and, and all of that. There is a little bit of a challenge with the uh, raising the house to ten uh, in terms of, you know, making everything work. And on the previous house as well, we also had to lower our garage so that that transition between the street and the driveway and so forth is, is much easier. Um, so we had to add some steps from the garage onto the house, which will alleviate also some of that grade change between neighbors. As you can see here on that, if you go back to that plan. It's a pretty um, open floor plan. You have the great, you come into a foyer, floor plan, um, great room. The kitchen is in the back looking over to the water. Um, we have the dining area and then you have two bedrooms on one side and then other uh, bedroom, three bedrooms on one side and then one bedroom on the other side. It's a pretty simple, open plan.
Can you just talk about the materials on my elevations?
We're um, using smooth stucco. We have the concrete tile roof. Uh, it's a charcoal, dark charcoal color. This is stucco. The house will be white. Um, front door will have uh, side lights and lighting and panels on the bottom, trying to keep with this, with the style of the West Indies. We'll have some woodwork, outlookers, brackets. You know, and obviously impact windows. So, and then um, we'll also try to do some tanning group, ceiling and ceiling work, so it keeps with the style.
Thank you. Any comments? Mission? Go ahead, Britt.
On your uh, front elevation and on the, I think these are the landscapes, CLP uh, number two. Uh, you showed the existing three uh, canary date palms. Uh, and uh, and then the removal of one of those, the one most to the east. And you're showing also on the elevation that canary date palm, the existing uh, in the middle. There, there isn't an existing canary date palm in the middle. There's two uh, on either sides of the property. Are you going to relocate the one? Uh, because it's not it's not, it's not consistent with the, uh, with the reality of the site. I went by and did a second look this morning.
You're correct.
Uh, can you state your name?
For the record, my name's Blue Lajos. I'm the landscape architect of Majestic Hughes. Basically, there's, there's three canaries in the back and there's the two smaller ones in the front that you're talking about on either side. What we're proposing is to relocate uh, during demolition, do the nicest large ones that are in the back by the front, one on the uh, side of the garage and the other one that's kind of centered with the door. So as you come out, it's a focal point. Uh, so those are the two that are, that were proposed.
So you're, it's just the plan incorrectly indicates an existing
I.
Palm, that's all. They help.
We'll, we'll correct that.
That's all. As soon as I, I just wanted to understand.
But the two nicest ones that are in the back are the ones that are being relocated in the front. Okay?
Perfect.
Um, can I go ahead and present the landscape while I'm up here?
Please.
Uh, can we go to the plan? Um, basically, what, as you can see, there's the two um, uh, canary date palms, one centered with the entry as you come out the front door. Uh, and the other one on the other side, we have uh, two eagle stone hollies on either sides of uh, the house. The one on, on the, is it the east side? Yes. The east side will move closer to the house as indicated in the elevation. We have a double and single fourteen-foot adrenidius. And then two smaller um, garcinia palms on either side of the, that's the master bathroom right there? The master bathroom, basically to accentuate the elevation, if you can go to the front elevation. Uh, the, the colored one we were at before. As you can see, obviously that canary date palm is kind of hiding that front door. It won't necessarily be hiding it like that. It's all the way to the property line in the front. And the other thing I want to note is the sizes that we're showing right now are the sizes that the plant material will be installed at time of installation. Okay? We're trying to stay within the theme that it's a one-story house. So the adrenidias will stay closer to that human scale, the one-story house scale. Um, and same, same with the holly, so they don't in the future, as they grow to their full capacity, they won't have a power to the house. In the back, we tried to provide privacy on both property lines, east and west, with Japanese blueberries, two and two on either side. There's a single adrenidius blanking and all that is lined up with the pool. And then some garcinia trees, you can see the three, the small ones. Again, we're showing them at the size they're going to be installed. They're probably going to double in size in the future. That said, that's where we, uh, we, we kept the privacy on the side, a minimum of four-foot-high hinges. Uh, but we tried to keep the views of the water somewhat open. And uh, in, in areas to the east and west, uh, we're proposing the heads that will be at about three, forty-two inches, providing privacy for the homeowners and at the same token, providing views. Our eye level is at about forty-two inches when you're sitting down, basically, or sunning or whatever. That said, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. The east side of the house is where you're going to have one of your uh, kind of date palms, correct?
Yes.
And the town is interested in having a utility easement uh, or obtaining one on the east side.
On the west.
On, on the west.
Oh, on the west?
Yes.
Disregard, I misunderstood.
Okay. Um, Neil, sorry, Neil, go ahead.
Can we move off of, off of the site plan? I have a question on Corey's comment that the covered entry bringing it down to twelve feet because of the tie beam. Can't that be considered an independent architectural feature? Why does that have to have the same tie beam height as the house?
It's more proportion to the house itself, instead of having a dominant tower.
It's really just to, you know, it was meant to be like an architectural element to stand out a little bit from the rest of the house.
Which it will at twelve feet. I mean, I, I, that was the one thing I circled because uh, in some Minnesota, they actually have a delineated height that you can't exceed. We don't have that here, which is good. But um, I agree enough.
It just didn't seem awkward to me and I think the center of the house needed a feature.
I think you'll, you'll see, you know, the, the problem with elevations, you'll see it more on the rendering.
If you look at the, maybe strength and color elevation, without the concrete.
Well, the rendering is better because these are all two-dimensional. You never see them.
And Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may just for a moment, I didn't see anything in the code that differentiated uh, and gave an ability for uh, that covered entry to be higher than the, than the tie beam designation in the code, which is why I made the comment.
Yeah, I, I think it hasn't been defined. I don't think in the code, maybe stand corrected, but I don't think our code, as you just said. But they are on the Minnesota to.
The various light elevation, just trying to pop up that entry feature. Architecturally, I mean, I think it works better. I, I, I did look at changing that and um, I mean, obviously we can do it. It's not a, 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 a problem to do it. But I think architecturally, this does look better in terms of proportion and scale.
Yeah, I, I don't have to disagree. I'm just saying. Will, I'll ask if one of the commission or again wants to make a motion to allow this, let's have a.
This rendering here, is this at your desired height rather than?
Yes, that was, that was the intended design. Um, that does not reflect the, well, bringing it down to twelve inches yet. Um, it's a condition for the building permit, so.
So, so what, what, what's our grounding that says that we can make them bring it down twelve inches?
It's really our review here.
Just, it's just, it's that you're, you're agreeing that there's no, there's no code reason to have it at twelve? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, the reason I made the comment was that the, the zoning code prescribes the height of the uh, the tie beam. And the code doesn't give me any differentiation between any of the tie beams in the house, even if it's a, a covered entry. So um, when I would review the plan, I applied a heightened height to all of the elements of the building, including the covered entry.
So this is maybe a question for our town attorney. Is it, if we, I, it, are we powerless to change that if it's in the code that way?
Well, I, I think that the way that your code is interpreted is not clearly spelled out and it's not, it's, it's not allowed, it's not permitted. So you would have to create some kind of distinction or perhaps maybe through a variance process. I don't know if that would be through building or zoning.
Uh, variance may not be applicable, but there are some specific provisions in the code that allow height above the maximum height that's prescribed. And, and it just, once again, it wasn't different, the code doesn't differentiate elements like this, which once again is why I made the comment.
Right, right.
So the basic question is, is if we wanted to approve this as drawn, can, can we do that? And
Under the current.
Or does it, or where they got to pull the permit, it's going to be changed anyway?
No, I think they currently can, this can be approved the way it is.
Okay.
Uh, let me just share some of the history of these eve situation. The reason some of these elements, most towns, I mean, are discouraging multiple eve heights. So if you, you can even see in this rendering, there're technically three eve heights on the front of this house. Uh, the garage and the projected um, flat bay is one, then you have the main house. Actually, there are four. Sorry. So that's what we have to be careful of. In this particular case, I, I agree with you, Neil, when I look at it more, it's, the mass is appropriate for the entry element scale. But I think for staff, this may be another loophole that we need to redefine so that we don't get, I mean, in this.
I mean, from an appearance standpoint, I'm trying to give it to them. I don't want to be backing the town into a corner that you're somewhere else.
And I, I sympathize with that.
I understand that.
I understand that.
Absolutely.
But again, it just, this little one element has four different eve heights. When you really analyze it and it's done in the wrong context, we can get into. So I, I would like to recommend to staff and maybe the town attorney to look and, and obviously Cory, to look in a way to, to address this. Not, not to discourage differential heights for certain elements, but in the context of how many are you allowed or, you know, so that we don't get some of these kind of wild looking. Just to thought, and, and there is a loophole. If we have no, nothing on the books to approve or deny this, then this could be just interpreted. Now, I think there may be a danger down the road to, to that situation. But as far as I'm concerned, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, Neil, there's nothing wrong with you approving or recommending this, on this particular application.
That's helpful. I have a question for the homeowner. The town has engineers have requested.
Sorry, please state your name.
Graystone, two nine hundred and twenty-five.
The town engineers have requested an easement for drainage that, or the drainage that currently exists there, but doesn't have an easement. And I think its intention is to make that a condition here of the approval, but I wanted to ask if you're in agreement with that.
I think we probably need to have some discussion about that. Particular pipe is three and a half feet outside of my property line to the west, toward Brian's area. And that drain, drains down underneath his dock where the, where the actual pipe comes out. And to give up five feet of our property for that particular easement, when it, it's, there's never been an easement there since my dad built the place in nineteen sixty-eight. Now all of a sudden, it's a problem after all these years. And it's, it presents some issues to us in terms of the home, re, re, re-drilling the home, building, retaining walls and so forth. So I think we probably have to have some discussion on that.
But you're a beneficiary of good drainage. And you agree that it's a good idea for the city to have a drainage system that, that, that works for the common good. It's, 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 I mean, it's difficult for me sitting here to understand why you wouldn't support this at a time you're doing the renovations and changing the house, then you can make adjustments accordingly.
Was that a question or?
All right, I'm trying to understand why you're hesitating to, just to agree to this.
Okay, granted, can you share with them some of the architectural things that can take place?
Particularly just that, when, when, if you're, if you're giving that five foot easement on that West property, because we're trying to retain drainage due to the racing of the floor finish, you're, you're having to then physically lose your five feet of property all the way from the front to the back, correct? Because my, my actual retaining wall is going to have to be the, of the five feet, correct? Am I correct with that?
Yeah.
So some of the things we looked at is, you know, how can we make these changes to make that, eliminate that retaining wall? Can we eliminate that retaining wall from the front to the back? And so at least, even though he's maybe given some of that easement to the, to the town, you don't lose the property physically. Does that make sense?
Right.
It's just very, it's very physical easement. If you have to move retaining walls and hedges and everything else, it becomes like, okay, you just lost that entire piece of property, it feels like, in terms of the, the value of the property itself, just that alone.
Let me ask, Tracy, maybe you can help me. Isn't it more standard to share an easement like two and a half and two and a half?
It's usually five and five. So it's five on one side and five on the other side. Because when you're going in to do repairs or improvements to that, you need at least a ten-foot area to get equipment in to do that.
Okay.
And the pipe is three and a half feet into the neighbor's property. So even if you wanted the five feet, then really the easement should only be for a foot and a half to make that five foot on our island, correct? The pipe itself is on the, the pipe itself is on the neighbor's property, yeah, at three and a half feet from our property line. So if you need five feet from Brian's property or from Brian's side and then five feet to the other side of the pipe, our property line really only, we should only be required to give you a foot and a half to make that five foot to the center line of that pipe.
Right, but it could be a case where we replace the pipe and then we put it right down the middle.
Could you step up?
Sorry. So it could be where we actually remove that existing pipe. So then we would just put it right down the middle. And to do that, like Tracy said, you need that area to be able to construct it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Who currently maintains the pipe, the town or the homeowner?
The town maintains the catch basin.
Right.
Because.
Same thing in my house, in my yard.
Right.
I did not, it was well-intended, but I'd already landscaped along where the pipe was.
Right.
And I said, no, I'm, I'm not going to give up an easement. So this is something that I had to deal with, rationalize, and, and I maintain the pipe, I maintain the drain through the seawall. The town maintains the easement. I can sympathize with the homeowner. It's his property. I don't see how we can compel him to do this, right?
The circumstances, I believe, are quite different than yours, where they're doing a clearing of the whole lot, starting all over, where you're in existing condition. And they're before us wanting some, they want something for us. So this is a little bit of negotiation. You want something from us, we want something from you.
Well, that might be, you know, I disagree.
Yeah, and, and, you know, where, where the real issue becomes is what happens when this drain doesn't work? And there's no easement for the town to resolve that issue. Those days come, they don't last forever. So when the, when the drainage doesn't exist, doesn't work, and we don't have access to the, to the property, then why?
I don't know. In my case, I've spent several thousand dollars recently just to take care of mine. It benefits my neighbors a lot more than it does me, but it's, it's something I feel strongly about. I think this is a taking of something that frankly, I don't believe the town has a right to unless the homeowner agrees to it. I didn't really mean, want to get this cleared away because I think the town's well-intended, but it's his property.
It's an important issue we need to talk about.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just from a, a pure legal standpoint, we have to be careful because it can be construed as a taking. And I don't believe the town has done a full analysis to know whether that for this particular property owner, we can mandate this. I believe at this point in time, it's just simply a request of the town. Correct. It's not a mandate because there is concerns about taking that we have to be cautious of from a legal standpoint.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I think.
But what I was trying to do is clarify, will our request be honored? And I pretty well heard here, no. I think that's, that's really was the owner's response.
Well, I think the town and the owner should continue this discussion and see if there's a amicable solution. I mean, I, I, I understand the draining, drainage requirement. But again, I think that's why I was hoping that five feet, two and a half and two and a half would have been much more reasonable.
Or even just a five foot from the center of the pipe.
Or whatever. Is it more standard, I think, I think.
You need a repair.
A big chunk of property.
You have five feet from the neighbor and then same from the pipe will give, will give from the center line of that pipe.
Right, but then you're requesting more from the neighbor.
And the neighbor's not giving the five foot on the other side of the pipe.
Nice, thank you.
Sure.
So the pipe is elegant, it's carefully, the pipe then has been given this. It's three and a half feet outside of my property line. So if you want a five, and you're talking about negotiations, if you want five feet, you go five feet on each side of the outside diameter of that pipe. That would be eighteen inches on my property, five feet on Brian's property, because it's already three and a half feet inside of his line. So if, if there's any negotiation, then we may be open to, but to give up five feet of my property at this point in time, I think would be an issue.
And the town attorney, attorney has clarified.
It's a request.
That we, this is, this is a request. This is not a negotiation. There may be some discussion between the town staff and you, and, and we hope that you will, will honor the town staff in helping to, you know, ultimately, the whole, everybody on your street, including you, has benefited by good drainage. And that's, that's ultimately what we're.
I was simply using the term that you used in terms of negotiations earlier.
And I, I think the town attorney told me I overstepped in using the word negotiate.
But I think this, sorry, yes, Tracy.
I'm sorry, can I just put this on the record though? These are the, this is the kind of problem that we have been experiencing and the challenges that we have in correcting some drainage issues that we have on that particular island. But I just want to put that on the record, that it is a challenge and this is kind of a stumbling block that we come across.
Yeah, I'd like to just recommend that, and do we have to defer the whole approval project or we can prove it's subject to resolution? Yeah, I don't think anybody is trying to avoid the fact of creating better drainage. But I just think it's, it seems unfair right now to just put most of the burden on the first one that comes up for improvements. I think the town needs to, through the engineering department, look at it, and from a legal standpoint, what is fair? I mean, I just think, I don't think anybody in this room would like to have the same issue imposed on them. So I think let's, let's work hard on this because as you said, Tracy, this is going to come up reoccurring.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we, I, I don't think anybody in the town wants to get into eminent domain.
No.
So.
No, it's just very.
Okay, all right. So my only last comment on the architecture, I wish you didn't use such a dark roof. That black is, I mean, from an energy standpoint, it's, you know, it's, it's really absorbent.
It's a, it's a gray.
I know, it's a gray elephant.
It's a nice contrast with the white. I mean, it's very black. Well, you know, if you look.
I use this in this building here. Certainly not this color, but you can see it's a little bit lighter gray, just to give you that modeling. It just seems a little rich, but I agree, the black and white works. Okay, we have a motion. Or public comments? We need a cheat sheet here. Any public comments? Hearing none, unless for a motion.
Neil, do you want to venture the motion?
So we're, we're leaving the drainage, the whole drainage issue aside. That's going to be resolved. It's not a part of recommending this development plan. Is that correct? I believe that's correct. Okay, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we accept it as submitted.
Were you guys going to allow the front of the?
The various eve heights?
Yes, we're just going to allow that to make that a part of the motion.
That's what I just said, as submitted.
Okay, as submitted, but subject to other conditions from the town planner, just that one is excluded. That have to do with, yeah, he has other conditions.
Okay, so should.
To do with the architecture though, it's more landscape and, yeah.
Yeah, but it's other conditions, yeah.
So I propose that we accept the, the development plan with the front elevation as submitted. And let's see, how would, how would we take out this section one sixty-four, one G reference on the town planner's comments?
I think you should just, you could say that and subject to the other conditions and that'd be fine.
Okay, and subject to the other condition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on, are there any commission, commission comments?
This, this plan had septic tank, drain field, coordinated with contractor. Are, are we, are we losing now with the way we're reviewing this, the, the more specific location of the septic?
No, we're not. I think that's a very technical item which the Department of Health mandates. And they're the ones that actually permitted. From our standpoint, we should just check that it's not, or it's a minimum of five feet up the house or the side yard. I think that's all. I don't think we need to drill down anymore into the functionality if that's what the question is.
I'm not questioning the functionality. I'm, I'm questioning some, and these two plans, obviously I didn't have any critique on the location. If it stays where in fact they've drawn it, but it, it just seems now that it's, it's not definitive anymore that with, with a reference like this, it, it could, if this one could slide twenty feet to the left and again, we lost possible locations for landscaping later.
What I see here, just if I can, you know, they've got a drain field which appears to have some reference in terms of what's required, you know, just by the appearances, the lines, the drain field line, location of the tank. I think the building department, our building department will receive a permit drawing from the contractor from the health department. And at that time, I think he can see if there's any variance to what was approved. I mean, he'll be going by this, what we review. I don't think we need to get more technical personally.
I mean, all the county is going to do is size it.
No, no, you have to actually have a survey drawing.
Pardon?
You have a survey drawing that is an attachment to you from.
Yes, I understand, but, but from a functionality standpoint, it's going to be a size thing. The location of it, the county, the county is going to allow it to be either split, they're going to allow it to be in certain places. And I, my, my point is often what I'm seeing, not on these two particular ones, but on previous two, was somebody's putting it in a convenient location, but not necessarily a location that is good in terms of landscaping.
So if it's changed from what you view and it causes the landscaping or something to change, it will be coming back before you guys because it's no longer the one that you approved.
That's what Dorene is doing. He's, he's going to be looking.
So if they are changing the location because of whatever happened from what you approved here, and it's going to be changing the outside of the home, then that will become, they'll be coming back after we submit it all.
Including landscaping.
Yeah.
If it affects the landscaping that we've reviewed.
It would be a little bit less than what they have submitted because it would just be a resubmital, showing you what the difference will be, but it will, they will have to come back.
Well, my, I don't think, I don't think my point's getting across. The land, the landscaping that we review, if, if the septic system still has a place to move without moving, the trees that are there still doesn't mean it's necessarily in an optimum place. I mean, the the example was the the house on Island Drive where. They basically took the entire field and stuck the septic tank. Field right in the middle of all the green of the the unused space. And basically created an area that in the future you can never landscape. Whereas you can tuck. This modern system at the the side of your yard, you can you can tuck it at the side of the front, which is what they've done here. This one is perfectly fine. That's why. No comments for the architect. But but I'm questioning who's reviewing it when I see comments like this, that the contractor can decide what to do with it. That. I think the town should have an input as to where the septic is going.
To an extent, we can because you're looking at in the plans and you can decide. However, I do know the health department does have how far it has to be from a water line, how far they has to be.
Yeah, there's. Quite believe that. I'm quite aware of all those restrictions, you know, I'm aware. I'm aware that we've approved things and we let people put turf over top of it. It's the the future is not the past. Not with the septic.
And then just to share, and I'm sure you know that there are new systems now that are much more. You know, or use less area. The who system, who we system, I think it's called.
That's what this, that's what these are.
Yeah, I know, but this this is.
It's a big.
That's not. I don't think this is an old, this is an old step. By the illustration, this is more of an old. Old standard drain field. You can actually wrap it around trees.
No, go go to the one on on. I mean, I'm not talking about this specific drawing. That's what I'm saying. I didn't bring it up to the architect. But you can see that they've designed a hoots on. Uh what was the address? Nineteen Aluthrow. Because that's what you would need to have the the supposed number of bedrooms. And that one, they you can see where they put the multiple modules of the tank system and you can see the field.
That's on A one hundred.
Yeah, A one point zero one.
Yeah, I mean, that's 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 not a.
That's clearly a hood system.
Not really. It's an old fashioned. Drain. But again. A letter on the members of the commission speaker, I don't think we want, I think we have engineering and building department. Review. I mean, I think they need to be aware of your concern. I think that's reasonable, but. I'm not sure we want to get.
Yeah, I I'm comfortable with our current process and remind on staff to monitor it. I'd like to make if we're done with this topic and I want to dismiss Neil's good comments because I think they are. I think that's what we're here for. Is to think these things through as a group. And. While while we're here and we recently discussed this easement request. We're we're. I I'd like to kind of get staff to rethink how they go about that. Our best shot comes at times like this to try to get an owner to voluntarily commit. You saw we didn't succeed in that today. But I'm like Dave, if we're you coming knocking on my door and say, give up part of my property, I don't think any of us are going to automatically do that. One of the thoughts is, you know, can we relook as engineering? Could could a five foot easement be enough? It's gonna be a whole lot easier to get people to give up. Two and a half feet on each side of their property line. Than than five feet. And I would think five feet is better than no feet, which is what we have in most cases right now.
Well, Rick, as you could see, you saw what happened across the street from you when we did, we fixed the drainage pipe on fifty four, fifty five Spanish River.
Right.
We had five feet on each side and you could tell that we could barely get through the piece of equipment with just the five feet on both sides.
But but you were so much better to have that five feet than no feet, which is the case on this one or the case on Dave's property and. And probably a dozen more around town. So. I I think, you know, if you have five feet, that kind of gives you the right to go in there unless somebody's really being a stickler. You're gonna be able to. Probably make it work. I'm just saying five foot's better than no feet. It just isn't commissioner comments and and I just want to pass it along.
Listen, we'll take whatever feet they give us. That's the team. We're gonna still be able to fix it.
My point, Neil, five foot, because I I'm gonna have to.
Okay, one of the comments that I believe he made was, well, there's landscaping there and there's a wall. Can can the town? Do the easement in a way that the town, if they destroyed the landscaping or they destroyed the wall, we replace it? And alleviate that fear on his part?
Of course. It's like it's we can do a temporary construction easement.
My my disappointment.
Sorry, Ricky. No, go ahead.
My disappointment is that that shouldn't really, that should be resolved before it comes to us. I don't think we really. I think if there's a requirement or suggestion from staff or the town, I think that negotiation should go on prior. To get.
Which it did. Yeah, we did.
Okay, well, it's obviously there's no resolution, so. And it's unfair for us to be reviewing. A proposal without, because that that's an impact. That's a huge.
And I have on my property, I have a half of a ten foot AT and T easement. Then and but there's no restrictions to my knowledge, at least apparent in planting within that and. You know, so it it really has zero impact on me. And so I I think there's ways, you know, if we have to take on the burden of restoration. That's part part of.
That's a trade off.
Could we ask staff to look into that?
Yeah, but again, I just.
I mean.
You can't put landscape on top of the question.
We understand. Certainly isn't it. Easement is a lot different than, or even underground. The clearances are much different than drainage. We know that. So. But I I think drainage is a huge issue. And but I I just would like to see staff and council. Address those negotiations or at least they can come to us and maybe ask us to be. You know, reasonable and interpret what's been said or discussed, so.
Yeah, I think what Tara is trying to say is, you know, we spend a lot of money on drainage. So if we're spending a hundred thousand dollars. To repair or replace a drainage pipe. We're not going to then want someone to plant trees over it that is going to destroy it in a matter of years. And now we've. We wasted a hundred thousand dollars.
We we I think we understand it. I do. No, I I agree. But I I just think the impacts to the owner or the homeowner, property owner, needs to be. Sat down and clearly described to what restrictions are going to be put on them and some kind of agreement. Made before getting this far along. That's all I.
Yeah, the only thing is, because we did mention to them and we've been working with them, they had questions that Tara had been going back and forth and answering them. It's just it's hard for us to get an agreement or a resolution before coming here. We don't want to defer. A project because that may never be resolved. They may choose not to give us anything. So.
Well, but it's almost leading to us approving conditional. That they do give you, and that's, I think, too far at the end of the line for me.
Yeah, we wouldn't ask you to do that, certainly.
No, we won't. I'll share that with anybody. David could move.
Jerry's here. Remember, you're robbing up cats.
There's a time when we can require things and can't require them. I think with your drainage, what you would have to do is you really have to do a full analysis. Of what is there and what is not there to figure out what the town really needs and see if there's an argument. That you could actually mandate it, but it becomes an analysis you have to do against taking. And if it's true that you're taking so much property, then you have to compensate them. So that that's the analysis you're up against. I think you just look at one piece of property. It really gears towards it being a taking versus more of a global analysis.
One more, you're on mark?
Please.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
See you next time.
Yep.